Okay, so let me just back up just to make sure that we got everything covered for this study session. So. Again, today is March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And we have one case on the agenda to be heard today. And looking at the upcoming cases, we have one for. April twenty-six, it's all been received and we're in the process of processing that application. And so that's a residential project located at ninety-one eleven East Magdalena. And the applicant is proposing to construct a storage building. And they're going to be requesting two variances. And that's one is to allow a detached accessory structure to eat the maximum height allowed. And the second variance that they're requesting is going to be to allow all the detached accessory structures that are two hundred square feet or. And that's including this proposed storage building. To exceed the fifty percent of the gross floor area of the residence. And then for cases that are coming up for May twenty-fourth. We do have possible cases for the first one is a T E P substation. Located at forty-three oh five East Grant Road and would be requesting a variance to allow for. A new twelve-foot tall along the south side of the substation. So that's. The wall immediately adjacent to Grant Road. These remaining two cases will be the first type of appeals to be by this board. These are D D O appeals. And these are the D D O's is a director's decision. And so the process to appeal a director's decision is through the Board of Adjustment. The first one we have is for a project that's a multifamily development that's located. At forty-four forty-one East Bellevue Street. And it was for a reduced setbacks that was approved. And we do have appeal. We do have received an intent appeal and the application. So that one will most likely be moving forward, assuming that they do pay the appeal fee. And then the second one we would have on that day. It was also to appeal of the director's decision to deny. A D D O. This is located at eighty-five sixteen East Third Street. Residential property for a reduced setbacks for it's a garage and a. I believe it's either one or two vehicle. So it's a combination of I. I believe it's three doors or two doors, one R V garage door at least. So those are the two D D O appeal cases that would be that we would be looking at May. So seeing that this board has not. Heard a D D O appeal yet. Are looking to on the agenda for April twenty-six. After the hearing to go over. What the board should be feeling for when we do when the appeal of the director director's decision video. Comes before the board. So we'll do a little bit of training. At the end of the public hearing on April twenty-six, I'll make sure I get that scheduled. So. You're all aware of what we look for. In those appeal cases. Any questions on that so far?
Yeah, Mark, I I do have a question. On the appeal to the director's decision to approve a D D O, assuming that the director approved the D D O, which obviously happened. Reduce the setback from multifamily development. Somebody must be unhappy with that decision. Obviously, the owner got the decision and was approved by the director. So is this coming from some other entity, some outside entity? I'm just curious about that.
So. The appeal is. Coming directly from the adjacent property owner to the project site. And the neighborhood association.
All right. That was the answer to my question. No, I don't have any other questions. So thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on?
Not for me.
Okay. All right. So looking to today's case, we have on the agenda C ten. That three dash zero two. It's nine nine zero North Benton Avenue Metal Garage and is located at nine nine zero North Benton. P zoning. So this, let me pull up a the next slide here. Just one moment. So this site is. Located south of Speedway and west of Swan Road. It's approximately point one six acre in size zone P parking. It serves this business across the street, which is an accounting firm. So they own both these. And what the applicant is proposing is to construct. A metal stored or a metal garage building over the parking area. The reason being is the applicant has. Stated that. The employees that use parking lot have been their vehicles have been subject to vandalism. Even though that they do have. A fence around property, they place razor wire on top of the top of the fence. To try to deter some of that that activity, but it's still occurring. So the applicant. Is wanting to provide a better security. And also protection from the the elements. So their thought is to construct this garage. So the variance that they're asking for is to allow the garage to. Constructed with an increased height from sixteen feet. To eighteen feet, two inches, and that's measured to the midpoint between the the ridge. Of the roof. So that's this is what we consider the midpoint where this pointer is at. We have received no approvals or no protests regarding this request. Staff's opinion is that this request should be denied, being that. There is not, it's not clear why the height of fourteen for the clearance, that's for the garage doors here. Is really needed. They state that or they cite that the A dot guidelines for. A entered vehicle is approximately thirteen. Feet, six inches tall, but that's actually comparable to a semi truck. So. And since this parking lot would be serving this business, you know, we don't see how or why semi semi trucks would need to be parking in this lot. So. I think there there is a self imposition. And also that they're not asking for the minimum necessary to afford relief. Obviously, for standard vehicles, the garage would be lesser in height. Because if you look at typical parking garages, their the vertical clearance is typically anywhere from. Six to, I'm sorry, seven to maybe eight and a half feet. And this is clearly way above that. So it's not necessarily a minimum that you know that they're asking for. So because they're wanting the height. To max it out to the, you know, the semi truck. And they provide justification for the reason why they need. These garage doors to be as tall as they are, the the roof and the trusses need to have space for these garage doors to operate. But it's it's, you know, the reason behind needing this height that's leading to our. Recommendation for denial. We feel like it's not the minimum necessary. They they could build a garage. Within compliance of the height for the zone. So that's staff's position. I I'll go ahead and and open it up to any questions at this time.
Yeah, Mark, I do have a question. That looking at that photograph, there seems to be a pretty big R V park. Right there. Maybe that's what he wants to put through that door. Just guessing.
That's a great point, and you do have the opportunity to have the. Applicant and if the owner is present, ask the owner that question. But here is the. The site plan and they've got parking spaces located inside the garage. And just keep in mind, these are standard sized parking spaces. They're not. Semi truck parking spaces or R V parking spaces. So. Parking spaces are meant for standard vehicles, which means you don't need that. Building height in order to accommodate the garage, the height of the garage. Ms. Paulus, did you have a question?
So I was a little surprised that the maximum height in the parking zone is sixteen feet. And I was just wondering what kind of zoning someone would need if they put in a parking garage. Which are normally multi-level. What kind of zoning would they need under those circumstances?
So typically with like you see some of the developments downtown. You're looking at the O C R type zonings where it's office, commercial, residential, where you can get. At that extensive building height needed for high rises. And then you have the parking garages. Obviously, on the bottom floor below, but you need at least a commercial type zoning. Or an O C R zoning, depending on what you're. You know what other parts of the, if you're including a commercial building on top of it, or if it's just a. A standalone parking garage, then you're depending on how high you know you're looking at commercial zoning.
Okay, and one other question related to Bruce's observation of the. R V that was parked there. If someone wanted to build a garage specifically for an R V. What is normally the height that is allowed for that? And would that require a variance?
So i- in this case. Again, the the zoning is P. It's P, it's parking. So it's min strike, it's meant to. Be a parking lot providing the required parking for. A business associated with that parking lot. So. If you were wanting to construct a building to house. An R V. That would be more like a storage, commercial, what we would call commercial storage. And so they would need the appropriate, for one thing, they would need the appropriate zoning for that. So that would be a commercial zone. Parking, the parking zone does not allow storage. It's strictly just for park. I'm not sure if that completely answers your question, but let me know if it doesn't.
Yeah, Mark, I've got one more question. Noting that it seems to be where he wants to park his. Employees to park, looking again at that aerial photograph, I don't see any place for employees to park. Even behind the fence, because there's that one building. Okay, there's some open space here. But I see some. Looks to be sheds and then a big shed and then the R V and then. Some other shape right next to the R V. I'm I'm curious to know if the argument of. Employee parking for the business across the street. Seems a little species to me.
Again, that missed. That is a good point. If you look, and let me see if I can pull up. Just one moment here. Let's pull up the aerial here. Okay, let me pull this up again. All right. Can you see the screen here of the aerial? Okay. So here's a better view of the. Business, but back here, we noticed that there is additional parking back here. So this is actually. Covered parking areas. So if that's actually for customers visiting the site, but there is parking spaces back.
Mark, can I ask a question relevant to that?
Sure.
Yeah. Could you tell me whether all the required parking for that structure across the street? Is provided on that parcel? And if that were the to be the case. Is the parking we're talking about on the subject property all superfluous?
So do you believe that this business here is meeting the parking requirements because they have parking on site? Parking lot can be considered overflow parking. So they could have, they could have actually have access to this parking lot here. It's obviously not currently, it's not striped at all, according to this aerial. So this may at one time been seen as an overflow parking for. Maybe some of these businesses along Swan. But if you look to the north, this is probably a striped parking lot, and it's actually. Serving the parking requirements for this thing here. I do know that this building used to be a credit union. One time. They didn't have the parking. So this this property here was. Re-zoned to parking so that they could buy the required parking spaces for that use.
Mark, relative to the required parking across the street. Is there a provision in the code that says that? All required parking must be provided on site. Although there may be some exceptions, I don't recall what we're what they may be, but. How does that section of the code apply to the subject property? And by a subject property. I really want to correct myself. I'm referring to the. To the parcel on which the business is located.
So you can have off-site parking. The code allows you have off-site parking, and I can't remember the exact. Occasions, and I think it may be six hundred feet. In a. As if you were walking to the site from from the. Line to property line. Using sidewalks. So if the property of a parking lot is within six hundred feet. Business could use it. As long as it's, I mean, if the parking lot was being used for, let's say. A good example would be like, like a shopping center. If they have excess parking. And there is another business that asked the management of that. Shopping center if they could use some of that as parking to meet their parking requirements. That would be allowed. There would be a parking agreement put in place, but as long as there's excess parking. This property is owned specifically for parking. And to my knowledge, there's no parking agreements with any other. Businesses, so they do have sole use of this parking because it's obviously within that minimum distance to be used.
Okay, so it's legal to have additional spaces offsite within a limited area or dimension.
Right, as long as the parking spaces are, as long as the parking lot is developed to code and that. You know, again, if it's sharing with other businesses that there is, you know, sufficient amount of parking spaces available to meet that. The parking.
We're operating on the presumption that these parking spaces. Will be used by employees. Connected to the businesses across the street. This is not. Just for any use. Parking for any other use, right?
That that's correct. It's specifically for the employees.
Okay, I have a question regarding the site plan. So could you pull that up for a second? Okay. So the vehicle would enter the building. Through the door. On the north side, and if we were to move to the. Elevation, you would see two doors, one in the north, the south side of the westerly elevation.
Right, it's the west side of the building. There's.
That's the west side and there's.
Right, one door is showing. Right, once for the ADA. Parking here. Okay, there one here. This one looks like it, you know, you pull in.
Right, that would be the only door that. Could be used to. Access the spaces within the building, correct?
Correct.
So am I reading it right that the only way to exit? A space here would be to back down.
So this would be the exit. There is another door.
There is another entrance on the far side. Oh, okay, I was, I didn't read that.
Yep, there's a, this is the next, yeah, there's another door here.
That is just a. Exit door.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And that alley would then, if you were to exit and make a left, you would be able to get to Second Street, I presume.
Right, I. However. They maneuver from this parking lot, they do. Not sure if they go north or south. I think we can go both, but it's probably closer to north. They go north.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I've got anything else, but I just want to come home to a comment that you you've already made, and that is. You're recommending denial on the basis that. The request is deemed to be self-imposed. And you come to that conclusion. Solely on the basis of the height, which you. Argue is excessive and is far greater. Than the clearance requirements of a parking space under normal circumstances, well, for a passenger vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I've got.
Oh, I don't, we have one, it's one thirty-one right now. So get adjourned and start the hearing.
Yes, let's.
What did you want to take this for?
Let me.
I I do have one question for Mark before we start.
Go right ahead.
Oh, yeah, Mark, I didn't, I couldn't find the the templates for approval or denial.
Yeah, you're talking about the motion template?
Yes, right.
Okay. I. I do have it here on the PowerPoint slide. I can bring that up.
Okay.
The time comes.
All right, when the time comes. No, yeah, no problem. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, if we're done with that and we're about to start, then. I would like to ask Ms. Hamlin if she is here, if she could. Do a roll call.
I'm happy to. Michael Marx.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Yeah.
Jesse Lugo.
Eric.
Miranda Schubert. I see Miranda, so I'm giving her a second to respond.
I thought I unmuted myself here.
Thank you. Irma Duran. Don't see Irma and Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Thank you. Mister Chair, we have.
Okay, very good. So let me start by reading the prepared comments. And then we'll move into the first and only item on the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the the meeting, you are given consent to that recording. We have one item on today's agenda. After that case is introduced, staff will present its staff report. Board members may then ask staff questions. After that, the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition, will have an opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and the other speakers. When all that testimony is completed, the board will close the public hearing. Discuss the matter and then vote on a motion made and seconded by other board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. All of those wishing to speak other than the applicant. Should indicate that wish in your name and address in the chat feature. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. And all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you were addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to to the Superior Court. Of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's Office. Within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process. Please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask staff. City staff to raise their right hands so I can swear them in. Can you do that, please? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, thank you both. I guess at this point, I want to turn to Mister Castro, and I presume he's going to give the. Staff report for the first and only case on our agenda.
Thank you, Mister Chair and members of the board. The case for today is C ten dash twenty-three dash zero two. Nine zero North Benton Avenue Metal Garage. Nineteen Z Two Investments LLC. Nine nine zero North Benton Avenue P zoning. The applicant's property is an approximately point one six acre parcel zone P parking. And currently developed as a paid parking lot. The applicant is proposing to construct a new metal garage over parking area. The applicant is requesting the following variants. One, allow the metal garage to be constructed with an increased height from sixteen. To eighteen feet, two inches, as measured to the midpoint between the eve and the bridge, the roof. All as shown on the submitted plans. In the plan reviews, the engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has objection or adverse comments. Planning and Development Services recommends denial of the applicant's requested variance. It is the opinion of staff, the special circumstance applicable to the property is self-imposed. That the variance request, it is not the minimum needed to afford relief and the least modification possible of the U D C provision which is in question. Today, proceed the total of zero approvals and zero protests. Mister Chair members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any at this point, but let me ask all the other board members. Are there any questions of Mister Castro? None? There are none at this point. Thank you. Then what I will do is ask the. Petitioner or his or her. petitioner or his or her representative to come forward. Uh, turn your video on and your audio on and, uh, I will swear you win at that point. Is that Ms. Lane, that is, you are the petitioner?
That's right, hello, how are you today?
Very good, good, okay, I'm glad to, uh, be able to see you, could you raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the, the truth?
I do.
Okay, why don't you state your name, your address and your relationship with the business across the street, the CPA office?
Sure, my name is Valerie Lane, uh, registered architect and am the architect of the owner of this property, um, and my address is three, four, five South Cherry Avenue, Tucson eight-five-seven-one-nine.
Okay. Well, what, why don't you, and, uh, and, uh, uh, give us the comments you think are appropriate for your request.
Uh, very good, is it okay if I share my screen with you all today?
You sure can.
Uh, okay. I'll ask, um, can you see my drawing sheet here?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and if I change to this screen as a map, can you see this? No?
Well, a, a alternative, uh, image is on the screen, there is nothing other than a gray area.
Okay, let me try again. Uh, sorry, I might have to switch back and forth a couple of times, um, it's not giving me the option of a monitor, but rather the software, can you see a map?
No, I, well, yes.
Okay, so I just, I, I'm just gonna kind of start from the beginning, um, here and I'd like to show you on the map, we have, um, we have, uh, Speedway Boulevard is here and, uh, Swan Road is right here. And as you can see in the red area, this is our, our building site, so, so currently it is, it is here, faces Benton Avenue. The same owner owns this corner property which is, um, he runs a, he's in a, a tax accountant, he runs it out of this, this building here. Um, you can see there's an alley behind his parking lot. Uh, he, he has, he uses this lot for employee parking during the day and also his primary business um, extreme sports folks and so they own race cars and, uh, he has to go, he uses an RV, there's our, an RV that's parked here as well and he uses that to go to these extreme race things, um, and, and so this is a tax write-off for his company and it is part of his, um, business model, so uh, I'm gonna stop the share again for a second so that I can show you. Okay. Okay, so these are some photographs of the property, so this is a, a neighboring lot to the north. You can see my mouse, okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so this is an existing, uh, wall and there, you'll notice you can sort of see a small sidewalk in front of there. This is our property in question and then you can see beyond on the south is it's some taller apartment buildings. Again, now I'm standing in front of the property, you can see the razor wire here and the wood gate. And this again is a neighboring parking that services the two-story apartments beyond and also a building that faces Swan across the alley there. And if we keep going along, again, you see this sort of unsightly fence there and here's the two-story apartments on the south side. Um, and, and there we go again, so our plan will be finishing this, you know, connecting to the sidewalk here and then to the other south side. We'll be maintaining this curb cut and then right here at the bottom of the screen will, the sidewalk will continue and we'll have, uh, uh, install a ten-foot buffer zone and I'll show you that on the plan in just a moment. Um, we'll maintain a parking, uh, spot, a handicap parking spot on the exterior of the parking garage and then, um, and then we'll install the metal building behind it, so, um, there we go, a couple of other pictures, uh, if I go back, so again, we'll tie into the sidewalk here. And just from this sort of zoomed-out view where this car is parked now, you'll see, we'll have a landscape buffer along that spot. Sidewalks in the front that connect to the existing sidewalks on either side and then the, the metal building face will be right around here and, um, okay, now I'm gonna stop share one more time. And okay, um, so as you can see here, uh, again, new sidewalk, the existing curb cut will remain. New sidewalk on the south and here you'll see the buffer, the landscape buffer. Uh, there's existing oleanders all around the edge that will remain. Uh, we'll install the new building, um, by the way, the footings for this kind of building, we don't even have to remove the asphalt that's already on the site, that will all remain and now we'll have the opportunity to capture water off of the roof of this building and hold it in cisterns so that we can then run, um, drip irrigation from rainwater around the perimeter of the building and to water these new trees here. Um, we have responded to some zoning comments already, uh, this is a little, this drawing is not completely accurate, but this handicap site or parking spot is now located outside. Um, and we have an updated, again, we're on, we're in the process of working with Paul, um, I think Cunningham maybe, uh, with zoning to respond to a few comments he had, so there is one handicap parking spot outside of the building. Um, and then if I go to the elevations and sections, so this building is a sort of long building, it'll take, it'll go from the front to the back here and this edge, this low edge of the building right there adheres to the existing sixteen-foot wall height. So, this peak, you know, it's just about here that is going to, um, be taller than, you know, what the building codes or zoning code is asking for and we need the door clearance to get the taller vehicles in and out of there and accommodate the depth of this metal structure plus the space needed to roll the doors up. We tried very hard to find alternative door types that had a different sort of operation so that we could keep the building as short as possible and there were none that were gonna, that were, you know, a workable, um, operation for us, so um, so we landed, we have to put these rolling doors in and then again accommodate the structural, structural depth. From the street perspective, um, you know, again, this long elevation that goes along here and along here meets the sixteen-foot requirement, so, um, from the street perspective, it's, it's not gonna be very noticeable. Um, we spoke to the president of the Neighborhood Association for the residential area that's across the street. They did not have any reservations about this as, um, again, I'm going to stop share for just a minute. Um, so again, the CPA office is here across the street, this is our building site. And as you can see, there's an alley and then this is Swan Road. So at the moment, you know, there's a direct sightline and by putting this building here, we're going to sort of make a little bit more privacy between this residential street and Swan Road. Um, so we're sort of blocking us a, as sightline to a large road with lots of noise. Um, the neighborhood was amenable to bit, to this especially because we're gonna connect to the sidewalk and add the landscape buffer that made them sort of happy and we've offered to talk to them about color choices before they make the final decisions on that. So they didn't have, the neighborhood, nobody from the neighborhood showed up to my public meeting, but I did relay all this information to the neighborhood president and she said she was, would share it with them and call me back if there were any issues and so, um, we feel strongly that we're creating a bit of an improvement to the neighborhood and again, this building site with that alley behind it has been subject to a lot of, um, a lot of vandalism, um, and again, there are two-story apartment buildings both on the north and the south and the buildings across the alley facing Swan are taller as well, so we feel strongly that, that the couple of feet we're asking for is in line with the scale of the other buildings on this side of the street and, um, again, the vehicles that park are both a mix of, of his employee parking during the day and his, um, that taller RV that he uses for a sort of mobile office. Um, and again, that, that RV is part of his business model and, um, written off on his, uh, tax statements, so and I find nothing in the zoning code that limits the type of vehicle an owner can, is allowed to park on their property, um. So I think that's all I have to say, I can answer any questions you might have, um.
Okay, let me ask you one or two, then I'll turn it over to other board members. Could you comment on the need for any parking on this property for the employees of the CPA business across the street? If in fact, the property that the CPA business is on has a sufficient number of parking spaces according to the code? If, if in fact the required number is provided on the other parcel, what is unique about the operation of this, of this business that would require the provision of more than the required number of parking spaces?
Uh, you know, he stated to me that he keeps the parking lot behind his CPA building open for his customers and, um, that it just sort of has functioned over the years as overflow and again for the RV, uh, that he uses.
So, um, you probably were present during the study session when I asked Mr. Castro whether the, uh, ability to, to use this property is linked to that business and, and the response I believe I got was that it is unless there is a formal agreement with another business. Um, so is it correct that all the use of this parking lot would be for the employees of the CPA business?
Yes, and the use and, and for parking the mobile office RV, both of those things. And, and again, he keeps his onsite CPA parking lot open for his customers to use.
Okay, um, although just as a, you know, parenthetically, it's always been my understanding that the required parking spaces for both the customers and the employees. But let me, let me ask this, um, in looking at the site plan, how do you accommodate that mobile home or mo- motor, that larger vehicle? I, I take it that large vehicle is to transport, uh, the so-called uh, vehi- the, the vehicle, that racing vehicle, is that?
Well, his customer, a, a large, um, percentage of his customers are involved in this dirt racing sport and so he goes to these events to see them, it's sort of a marketing effort and he often goes to see his clientele at these events and so, um, the site plan again, we've been responding and talking with some folks in the zoning department about how we need to lay these parking spots out, so what you see in front of you was, um, an effort to show how many cars could be parked in this if the RV was not in the building. Um, we have a pull-through, we have a door on each, each, the, the west and the east, so it could be a sort of pu- pull-through um, arrangement and, um, it is wide enough to maneuver inside of the building, but, uh, because there's an alley in the back, it felt more appropriate, so it's likely that this thing will park um, in the east-west orientation sort of near that back door. Um, and then again, there's one parking spot on the exterior and there'll be space for a few inside.
So, are, are you saying that the site plan we're looking at is not a final site plan but that, and so that we should not limit ourselves to the orientation of the, how these spaces are drawn on this plan?
Uh, that's right, the zone, again, the zoning, uh, department and I, would, they had a few comments about how this was laid out, which is also has to do with why we, we moved the handicap parking to the outside. Um, and so as soon as this variance hearing is over, we'll send the updated plan over to them for their approval. Um, and, and then we will hire the engineers to, to deal with the, uh, structural engineering of this building, but nothing is intended to change. And again, we are thinking in terms of the future a little bit, um, if this, if this were ever sold um, to someone in the future, you know, this would be the arrangement that some, in a more typical fashion could, could use.
I think that all due respect, it kind of makes it a little confusing, uh, we're given this material because it, uh, has a bearing on the decision we make but then we were told the material is not reliable. Um, but furthermore, you, I think what you're saying is if there is this larger vehicle parked within this building, it's most likely, likely gonna be along the north side of the structure oriented in an east-west manner which just appears to me is, uh, a vehicle that's gonna block the access into the parking garage. So I don't know how that's gonna work.
This is, uh, so based on our conversations with zoning, this is all they're requiring from us in order to satisfy their requirements, so again, the handicap site was one that was of most concern to them, so we've pushed that outside of the building. Um, and then they did not seem to think that we needed to show individual parking spots, so this is the current, most current version of our site plan that they, um, are requiring from us.
Okay, well, well, thank you for all your, all your responses, uh, that's all I have right now, so let me turn it to any other member of the board, uh, and so let me ask anyone else have any questions of the petitioner, yes, Ms. Paulus?
Um, Valerie, I, Ms. Lane, I would like to know if the RV is parked in that structure, is there room for other vehicles to maneuver within that building? And if so, how many other vehicles would be able to use that facility in the event that the RV was parked there?
Uh, the RV is one second. Um, so, so that RV is twenty-one feet long and, and twelve feet, less than twelve feet wide, it's about nine, nine and a half feet, so if it's parked here, uh, you can see the total length of this building is eighty feet, we have roughly twenty feet, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty feet in between, you see the little eye-shaped columns here. Um, so the RV, if it's parked, could take up here about this much of the space. Um, they also uh could pull it in and it could, it could fit here. And um so yes, so you can see that there's, you know, sixty feet of of space left here. And with the two doors, um, you know, this a a vehicle could technically pull in this way and make a circle and go back out this way. Um, and again, they'll tuck that thing up po- potentially if he's you, if he's during the season, it seems to me like he talks about a sort of seasonal use with that. So there's many weekends in a row that he uses it. It'll maybe sit here so he can easily pull it in and out of the alley. And then during whatever his off-season is, it might tuck back up in here.
Um, Ms. Lane, you didn't really answer my question. If the RV is parked in that facility, how much room is there? How many vehicles can be parked there and be able to maneuver with that RV? And I would assume that you've done that study if you're proposing that this is going to be employee parking and not just parking for the mobile office.
Yeah, so about eight car uh six cars can be parked inside of here. So again, the RV can take up this corner and fit and still give space to leave here. And then six cars can go along this edge.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, and then seven because of the handicap space outside.
Anybody else have any questions of the petitioner?
Yes, uh, I do.
Go ahead.
Awesome. Uh, Valerie, um couple of questions again, I'm not wishing to harp too strongly on this parking in the employee park. Is the current use doesn't look like it's really amenable to much are uh much employee parking other than that there's a large area of asphalt out front of the gate, but that gate is pretty intimidating, I think, as we've mentioned. Uh, and so I'm not sure people going in and out of it very much. Uh, and that again, the parking of the RV in there does seem to inhibit because you've got the go-through. And those things don't move maneuver real well. Uh, and they are big um like a bus. And uh you have the uh RV sitting in there, it's going to, because the way you angle your parking spaces, they're pulling in, they're parking and they're backing out and then they're driving forward out the east end of the building through that other uh uh high-rise door uh. Now, the RV that the RV wants to fit through coming in and out to the alley and the on the east side. Uh, so again, I'm having trouble envisioning how people are going to park in there very well. And then uh you move the handicap uh space to the uh outside of the building. Uh, and with the RVs, with that space being uh on the outside, sitting in front of the door. And even with it inside the building like you showed it the first time, it makes that uh that fourteen fourteen-foot door seem a little bit of a bit of overkill for just a regular handicap RV vehicle uh for handicap parking. And so maybe that door just seems redundant to me. Uh, but can you address that? So that uh, the the it does seem to inhibit the parking uh of that, having that RV parked in there. And that's gonna have to really uh, that's gonna really have to just drive in and then drive out. To drive in through the west end and drive out through the east end.
Yeah, so I think that you're asking about this this door here.
Yes, that's the one.
Yeah, so this um plan has actually evolved a little bit um over time. And I think that this door functioned a lot differently before because we'd pull a car in and use this as a back backup sort of space. And you know, this in 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 the diagram, we see this is a parking space with a wheel stop and then this is a striped area. But this is like, uh, in terms of it being a surface, this is all continuous existing asphalt. So the door is is redundant, but again, with this two doors on this end and one on this end, it offers the uh ultimate flexibility. And we kept this side enclosed with the thought that again i- in most of the year, that RV will take up this sort of quadrant of the building. And um and allow for this whole side to be open.
I see, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, let me ask one uh last question before we wrap it up.
Mark, I had a, I had my hand raised, actually.
Oh, I apologize.
I I I guess you didn't see it. That's okay. Um, that's okay. I just have a couple clarifying questions. Um, one of them is just to make sure I understand the reason that we need this increased height is specifically for the RV. Is that right?
Uh, no.
Because that's what a lot of this is hinging on, like how how high it is. And is this the minimum needed to provide relief?
Yeah, let me uh think, thank you. Um, so again, the RV functions as an integral part of the business that the man runs. Um, I'd like to also note note again that there are no limitations in the P-zone that says an RV can't be parked in a P-zone. So um, there's nothing in the existing code saying that this is not a use that's allowed in the zone in the first place. And the reason that we need the the um height is simply due to, yes, the the, so the thing is thirteen foot, six inches tall or thirteen foot four, I think. And uh, and so vehicle door, these rolling doors come in one foot increments. So this is the shortest door that we could get. And it has to roll overhead. So we needed, so on this this side over here, there needs to be a specific amount of space of foot to accommodate that rolling door overhead. And then the depth of this structure here, so we have our main red steel member and plus our purlins. So we need, so this space is dictated by the structure itself. Um, and then additionally, it's a little hard to see here, but in between the doors, we've we've squished these doors as close as we can get them because there has to be a column there in between. Plus the framing elements needed for the door opening. So we've worked very hard with the metal building company to make sure that um we've got these openings as tight and close as we can get them. And we're not asking for any additional overage of space. It's exactly what what's required to get those doors up and open and again accommodate the the structural depth.
Thanks for that explanation. It helps a lot because one of the things that we're supposed to be considering is, is this the minimum required in order to provide relief. And then the other one has to do with whether or not the limitation you're trying to address is self-imposed or not. But I heard you say that this RV is, you know, an integral part of this person's business. Um, do you have any other thoughts that you would want to add about the part about whether or not this is self-imposed?
Um about the self-imposed part? No, not not particularly. Again, um I I would think that it's important to recognize that we're making an improvement to this neighborhood um in general. And we're taking with the with the additional um, the buffer zone in the sidewalk and the offset from the street. We're sort of trying to step down the scale, you know, to this more residential scale. And and this this edge, like it's it's a little hard to look at sometimes in the elevations because they're flat and projected. But this this edge or this edge here aligns with the sixteen-foot height requirement. So like, if you're a person walking along the street or driving here, that additional height is not going to be perceived very much. And again, there's a much taller building on the south and the north, so it's a little smaller than those. Um and I, so I think that it's, and right now, I showed you the photographs of the site with that razor wire, sort of the torrent and the RV. Like, I think this is gonna be, those things will be now hiding inside of this structure. It'll be a little safer. There's been, um, the razor wire is there because people continued to hop over that fence and act badly and do malicious things. And so hopefully with with this, the perimeter fence, well, the the chain, there's chain link around the outside perimeter. There's that concrete block facing Benton. But all those fencing that can come down now and it'll just be the building and the oleander. So it sort of creates less enticing space for people to hide out and do weird things.
Thanks. I don't have any more questions.
Before I I turn to you, Ms. Schuber, are you completed or you done?
Yeah, I was just saying that those were my questions. I don't have anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Polis, you have one more?
Uh, yes, Ms. Lane, where do employees park now?
Um, my understanding is that a couple of them park. Um, it depends, I think that CPAs, it sounds like they have uh odd or shortened hours sometimes dependent on their clients. So he says that sometimes they'll use the back parking lot that's on his site. And then if they have a busy day, they use this for overflow employee parking.
Okay. If that's all the questions, uh, I want to thank Ms. Lane. Uh, and then uh uh, I want to check whether there's anybody else in the virtual audience who wishes to speak, either in favor or in opposition. Is there? Hearing none. I presume no one else wishes to uh to speak to this case. And so I think where it it would be in order to close the public hearing. And that means that there's no further opportunity for public input. And I want to turn to uh the board and ask, is there a member or members that wish to uh discuss the matter or?
Excuse me.
Now, who is that?
I'm sorry, I live in the neighborhood. Um, and I just have some general concerns about the building.
Okay, well, let's reopen the hearing and um before I ask you to identify yourself, let me ask, is there anybody else in the virtual audience that wishes to speak today? Okay, um, the person who just uh said something, could you first turn your video on?
Um, I will try to get it on. Um let's see. I think it's working. Yes.
Yeah, we do see you. Um let me ask you to to raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, could you state your name and address and uh make it clear how far away you are from the property in question?
Uh, my name is Sandra Carranza. My address is forty-six twenty-nine East Third Street. I am approximately, I'm on the corner of Third and Benton. And the property that you're referring to is probably three to four parcels away from me.
Okay, why don't you proceed and tell us what you think uh we should know?
I don't have too many problems with this, but I do have some questions about it. Um, currently, this has housed many recreational vehicles. So as we currently are speaking, there is a fifth wheel down there that has been down there probably about thirty feet long. Um, and then there is a small trailer, which is probably about twenty-one feet long. I have never seen those gates open unless the company is packing up to leave for a weekend trip or something. Um, I've lived in this area in these, this house um since I was a kid. I am sixty-two years old now. So um I'm a little confused at why he's asking for this. Don't misunderstand me. I know that there's a problem in this neighborhood. I have a fifth wheel. It's been broken into six times. I've had to move it from the side of my house into the front of my house. Um, but that doesn't give me the right to ask for zoning, to rezone my area and give me something higher than what this neighborhood is allowed to do. Um, and that is my concern. There are several parking spaces that are at the side of his building. Um, I never see those parking spaces filled ever. I don't see cars on the side of the street. Um, I'm just a little confused that we may be being misled. Um, I don't doubt that the gentleman hasn't had um vandalism. I'm I'm sure he has, just like the rest of us in this neighborhood. Um, but does that really warrant him to have a metal building that passes up higher than what we're supposed to be allowed to have in this neighborhood? Um, I don't, I don't really know. I don't think so. In my, in my opinion, no.
Mary, um, address these comments?
Ma'am, why don't we wait till her comments are completed? And then I will give you the opportunity, but I want to hear what this lady has to say first.
Thank you.
Um, that is my concerns. There are those few things. Is it gonna make the area look bad? I don't really think so. But on some of the details that are being said, I don't see that on a daily basis. And believe me, I'm around this neighborhood. Um, so I'm confused on what exactly he's wanting the building for, other than vandalism? Yeah, I agree. But there's more than one twenty-one-foot trailer there at all times. Um, there is a large fifth wheel. It's as large as mine that's parked in front of my house because I can't put it on the side of my house. There's too much vandalism. Um, why are we doing this for him when the rest of the neighborhood is not allowed and we would all have to go through this process? Um, so I'm just wondering, there's no way he's gonna get cars in there with that large one there and the small one there. There's no way. Um, that's my concern. I just don't feel that this is all being honest. Other than him putting the building up. Okay, fine, I do have a little concern, but um I'm willing to go ahead with the building. But I don't think we're being honest about everything that goes in there and where the parking is. That's all my concerns. Thank you for hearing me.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um Ms. Lane, you have an opportunity to rebut anything that was just said.
Um, again, I'm, you see the map?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so this here is the covered parking area that for his CPA business. And um, so I am told that, again, that his his employees are using this as overflow. I am not there every day, but that's the information that I've been given. Um, these items that you see right here in the map photograph are temporary shade structures that will go away. They're not structural, uh, they're not connected to the ground. Um, these are some, yeah, they're like overhead little shade canvas things. So those will go away. Um, again, this, this is the um RV mobile office that he talks about. Um, and then a racing, a trailer vehicle. And I've been told that this won't be staying there for that this is not part of the, this is often gone. Um, in the picture, we see this. Um, and again, we can look at it there. And then you can sort of see the temporary structure right there. So um this building is going to, the size of the building goes from this edge to this edge up to here, a little bit beyond that wall. So there is plenty of space for for this vehicle, plus any vi- cars. Plus any cars that go in, um, I didn't catch her name, but she uh, was talking about vandalism. So that is, that was the primary reason for wanting to do this, uh, to put this building up. And again, um. We have. Tightened up the scale and the size of these openings to the bare minimum that we need, so we are, I mean, two foot, two inches. Is, is exactly what we need to get the, the doors in, plus these vehicles in and out, um. And again, we're, we're not rezoning the property. We're not using it for anything that's not currently allowed there now. We're simply making a little bit cleaner, nicer arrangement, um. And it is in line with the existing scale of buildings that are on that side of the street now. And again, if we were asking for a height variance across the street on the residential side, this would be a different kind of conversation. Um, but this side of the road along Benton is all two-story buildings and our building is not going to be that tall. So, um. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lane.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask one more time, is there anybody else in the virtual audience that wishes to say anything? And um, I have not heard anything, so I am assuming we have heard from everybody that wants to speak on this case. I'm gonna close the hearing. And now I'll turn to the board and ask, is there a member that wishes to either provide any discussion? Or to make a motion, one way or the other in this case? Ms. Paulus?
Um. From the information we've been given, um, it seems like this um, proposal could improve the area. With some vegetation in sidewalks, but. It just seems to me that we're being misled and I think that hearing from a neighbor. Um, about her perception of um, the situation, both with regard to the safety in the neighborhood. As well as the use of that property at the current time. I just feel like money might have been better spent getting a rezoning on this property. Even a C-one zone would have allowed the kind of height that they wanted, um, but I just. Um, I have a problem with this um, proposal, so that's my comment.
So is that a formal motion to deny?
No, I'd rather hear from other people on this commission and what they are feeling, as I said, it's um. Could be an improvement to this area based on what Ms. Lane told us and the improvements that they want to make. But I also feel that with a rezoning to a commercial use. To store recreational vehicles might be a more honest way to approach this.
Okay. Uh, what about any of the other members of the board? Ms. Schuber?
Um.
Ms. Schubert?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to Bruce, it's actually Schubert, like the composer.
No.
Um, I, I agree with Bonnie's remarks, I am not ready to approve or deny. I just feel like, I'm really looking at our rubric and how we're supposed to be making this decision. Um, you know, it's supposed to be the minimum to provide relief and not, um, not something that was self-imposed. Um, it makes me feel concerned that I hear a neighbor saying that they're not offered the same privileges to protect their own vehicle from vandalism. And I understand that the, the differentiation is probably, um. A difference in zoning, um, since this is zone parking and, um, the neighbor who spoke up is probably in a residential area. Um, so I understand all of that, but I just feel like I don't have enough to make an informed decision right now.
Okay, okay, Mr. uh, Bruce, oh, Bruce.
Yes. Thank you, um. Yeah, I'm, 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 find myself a little torn uh, with this thing, uh. Uh, changing zoning, I mean, I've, I've looked at this on a number of other types of cases. And that's like kicking a can two years down the road, because you just don't. Rezone something real easily in this city without going through a huge process. And I'm not sure that's really warranted in this case. Um, I do, what I do like is, uh, I'm, I. I have those questions. Sorry, uh, I, I, I do have. Uh, I had, I had questions about the use of the inside of the building in terms of it for being employee parking and the handicap and. All those issues that I see with uh, with all the things he really does want to put in there, so I'm, I'm a little torn in terms of uh. Uh, what uh, what he's using it for, what he says he's gonna use it for. And uh, the, the extra door on there doesn't seem to make any sense to me. Uh, but on the other hand, um, it gets rid of that ugly wall and, and puts up a building and does block. The issues of, you know, the sound from Swan Road, which is a pretty busy road for sure. And um, so I'm not sure how I feel, I'm not sure if I'm for or against it. Um, but uh, and then there is the issue of self-imposed, which. If we're looking at it from that respect. I'm not sure we are, can be allowed to grant a variance based on. The fact that there are a number of self-imposed conditions here that it's not. Uh, yeah, it's, it's what's needed to have relief for getting a door in there, but. If uh, if a rolling door is, and need, does, those big rolling doors do need that kind of space above them to. Uh, how's the, how's the roll-up part there? Uh, and uh, but that's because they want that fourteen-foot door in there, so they have to put a building in there that will accommodate it. Um, I, yeah, I, I, I sort of think the building is gonna be a lot better than that. Uh, nasty fence that they've got there, but again, the self-imposed, and just, I'm not sure we really can. Grant a variance of this because there are so many self-imposed conditions here. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at on that.
Um, but are you at the point of making a motion?
Uh, sure, I'll make a motion, but I don't have a template, which Mark, uh, which. Um, which. Say what?
One of the items he said, yeah, there we go.
Okay, yes, perfect, thank you, thank you, okay, uh, so. In this case, uh, I'm going to move that, um, in the case of uh, nine ninety North Benton Avenue Metal Garage. A nineteen sixty-two Investment LLC. Uh, I move to deny the following variance case C-ten dash twenty-three dash zero-two. Allowing a metal garage to be constructed with an increased height of sixteen to eighteen feet two. As measured from the midpoint between the eve and the ridge uh, of the roof, all is shown on the submitted plans. Subject, uh. Possible reasons, though, is to blow, reason may not, uh, we may. Need a property without a variance, variance is a minimum necessary to afford relief. Uh, the need for the variance is self-imposed. Uh, granting the variance may negatively impact the surrounding area. Uh, again, I'm not sure that fits in this particular case, uh. And uh, but that's the reason that the, the variances of, of, the reasons for the variance are self-imposed. Um, and uh. It would seem to, uh, not sure it grants a special privilege, uh, but um, it is not detrimental to the public welfare. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that, I'll second Bruce's motion, um. I do believe that if the structure were just for employee parking, that a. Um, building with less height would be appropriate and would be suited for even a tall pickup truck. But what's being asked for is really solely for the purpose of being able to house a much larger vehicle. And I do think that that's self-imposed, so I second the motion.
So let me make sure I understand, the motion is to deny the request, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All in favor, and make sure that we all understand, if you are in favor, you're voting to deny. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. And the motion is hereby denied. So that is all we have on this one case, that is all we have on the agenda. That brings us to the conclusion of our meeting today, so thank you.
You know, uh, you guys have done a very poor job of your job today, this is an improvement to the neighborhood and this is not a used. No, this is not a used, that's not, this use is allowed. He will continue to park the vehicle that he's allowed to park on this site.
So we are, we want to just bring this.
Thousands of dollars in seven months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you, board, I'm sorry for what she has done with her. Fingers, um, that's just uncalled for, for a neighbor. But thank you for listening.
I think it's important to focus on what we're supposed to be considering for these decisions, it doesn't have to do with the worth of the project or whether or not it's good for the neighborhood. We have very clear rubric of like reasons we can give to do this.
That's absolutely correct, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I. I move to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.